Good evening, everyone. Today's Monday, January 10th, 2022, our first meeting of the year at 6:30 PM. It's time for the Board of Selectmen and FAA joint meeting. First order of business, as always, we stand to pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sullivan.
Before we get started, on behalf of the Board, I'd just like to pass long sympathies to the family of former Deputy Chief Tom Boshon and his wife Patty and their families. Danny, his father passed away this week, over the past week. He was 97, member of the Greatest Generation, fought in World War II. I happen to know him, very nice, nice person, nice gentleman. Send our sympathies to the Boshon family on their loss.
We do. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. And two in the agenda is the consent agenda, which has the minutes of December 20th, 2021, and an appointment for Cheryl Layden for the Council on Aging with the term to expire June 30th, 2025, for members.
Chief President?
Is Cheryl present?
Make a motion, Chair, Mr. Chair, to appoint Cheryl Layden, term expires June 30th, 2025, to the Council of Aging.
Second. This is for the entire consent agenda?
Oh, I'm sorry, in the minutes.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Sigenovich. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Four, zero. Thank you, Cheryl, for stepping forward. Item three, the Town Administrator's Report. Jonathan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Few items here tonight. The first is that the town has agreed to help Camden apply for, to apply for their second application for the interest in the underutilized properties grant for the mill project that was not submitted and approved in time the first time around. So we're going to assist them and help them get some, hopefully get some extra money for, to offset construction costs for that property. The Complete Streets Grant for Mason Road, we received official notification that we were awarded $400,000 for the construction of that project. So that entire plan is going as we hoped it would. As you recall, the town meeting authorized borrowing for this project at the October town meeting. The borrowing will be repaid from the Complete Streets Grants Award as the terms of the grants require the street to be completed in phases and then reimbursed. The program is a pretty good example of coordination across multiple departments. We worked with planning, highway, water and sewer, and it was a pretty positive outcome with no cost incurred by the local taxpayer for this road project. So we're pleased to see that move forward. The next item is we've asked the Mass Development to help us with a feasibility study, a site readiness study for some town-owned property behind the courthouse. The town owns 50-plus acres in that area, and we'd like to explore options for marketing the property, perhaps in agricultural biotech research, development complex or similar to that. To date, I've been working with the town planner, highway superintendent, the conservation office, and CMRPC to discuss the idea, and we will be meeting with Mass Development, who's very interested in discussing this further with us and assisting us. So we're hoping to find some use for those, that large amount of acreage that we have behind the courthouse. Reminder that the vaccination clinic will be this weekend. So far, we have 60-plus people signed up to receive their first, second, or booster shot, so we're looking forward to that. The Cultural Committee gave us a $1,000 grant to help us develop an RFP, RFP for development and costing for the green space that we've been talking about for about a year in the upper parking lot of the town hall. So that project is actually moving along, and that will do with my Town Administrator's Report with the exception of, I'd like to, with the Board's permission, recognize the police chief and the town clerk who have another matter that we would like to close the riddle on. So, Mr. Chairman?
Chief Weiner, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Administrator. Just so you can recall, the Board appointed Merrick Kowalski back in November to the position of lieutenant, and his appointment was effective this past Friday, and we're going to have a swearing-in at that point for everybody. But of course, the good snowstorm of the year had it, had other plans. I don't know if that's a signal for his lieutenant career that it starts out with a storm, but, you know, who knows? But the town clerk was good enough to be able to arrange to come in tonight and have him officially sworn in and welcomed by the Board. So I thank you for the time, with your intelligence. If we allow that to happen, that'd be great. So I recognize Town Clerk Laurie Smith and Lieutenant Kowalski.
Can you raise your hand? You repeat after me. I, Merrick Kowalski.
I, Merrick Kowalski.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully perform.
That I will faithfully perform.
My duties as lieutenant of the Dudley Police Department.
My duties as a lieutenant of the Dudley Police Department.
As police lieutenant.
As police lieutenant.
I will represent the town of Dudley.
I will represent the town of Dudley.
In a professional manner.
In a professional manner.
Provide leadership to the department.
Provide leadership to the department.
And obey the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And obey the laws of the Constitution of the United States.
As well as the Constitution.
As well as the Constitution.
And laws of the Commonwealth of Mass.
And the laws of the Commonwealth of Mass.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Congratulations.
You want to do your?
Merrick's here with his family, is here and everything too. So he started out hitting the ground running this week by getting, getting his feet wet with a lot of different projects, so we'll get him, get him going on that. But if he wants to say a few words, I'll turn it over to him. Thank you again for the board.
Awesome. Again, I want to thank the Board, the chief, and my family for this opportunity. I look forward to the new position, the leadership that I'll bring to the Department, and we do have a great Department, great man and woman of the Department that the town is very fortunate to have, and I'm part of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief, you want your picture up here with everybody, like before?
Want to bring it down?
You want to bring everybody up again, Merrick?
No, that's what we do.
Why not? We only, how often do we do this?
It's a do-over, John, for you.
Oh, you know?
That's what he said.
It's a do-over.
When you want to do this. Trip over my dead computer.
Yeah, we'll move them over here. Come on in here. Hold on. Merrick, come over here. Everybody can see you.
Looks like you should be on patrol tonight.
Thank you again.
You're welcome, guys. All right. Yeah, that's a good moment. Very, very proud.
It's not all bad.
Not at all. Say it right.
Just usually.
All right, anything else, Jonathan?
I'm Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Motion by the Administrator's Report.
Motion by Mr. Sullivan. Second. Seconded by Mr. Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. All right.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ruda.
I know you hate it when I do this, but we could do four B quickly.
We could. We could. Without any objection, I'd like to bring Zosha Shidlik up to talk about potential new tenant at, and a new Class II license holder at Henry Sales and Service at 65 Schofield Ave.
Mr. Chairman, I asked, I asked Zosha to come in to discuss her plans because we had a similar plan the last time, and she, we ran into a few issues that I think we should just talk through to make sure she's on the right track as to what the Board is willing to take a look at and approve.
Okay. Sounds good. Zosha?
Yes, so we get rid of the sem through the, through the court because he was breaking the laws, and he wasn't letting nobody to do right things. So that's, I'm glad he's gone. We did took care of the building. We cleaned very well, outside, inside, and we did lots of repairing, like update, you know, like electricity and inside the building. And also, we would like to rent again. So I came for help. If it's possible, you can help us to give someone license again. He's the local guy, very nice businessman, and he would like to rent it from us. So I don't know if you can help us with this, this, no?
Okay. Okay, so what do we know? Do we have any, have they already applied for license?
No.
This is not official, we haven't put an official application in because my understanding, Mr. Chairman, was that it was a very similar model to the last one, where I believe that Zosha would like to, you'd like to retain four, four spaces for yourself and?
Well, even three is okay because Henry, you know, he still want to be here to the time we find somebody really good so we can give us our license to someone. But before we find somebody really, you know, nice, we will know, we can count on him, and we do what he's supposed to do. We like to keep it just the license so we don't lose it in case. But big person, like we having 13 cars right now. So we like to give him list ten to buy, sell, so he can survive earning some money.
So the issue, Mr. Chairman, again, was that we did a similar model, as you remember, and the tenant let Zosha and Henry down, and we had some, some overflow that caused our police department to have to go down there and, and remove some vehicles, ticket some vehicles and deal with that issue. So before we went down the path, again, I wanted to give the Board an opportunity to hear what the plan was and see if?
All right. I didn't know if there was, like, actually someone in mind. Mr. Sullivan? Thank you.
A couple of quick questions, Mr. Chair. Either Administrator or police, the issues that were there were not related to Henry and Sophie's business?
Correct.
It was the tenant?
Yes.
And we had multiple licenseses here, but now it's just you folks and you're going to bring one more person in?
Yes.
I think that would probably alleviate some of the confusion down there, too. That's why I want to be clear, Sophie, I know, I knew the answer, but the issue wasn't you folks, it was your tenant, because it's never been a problem here before.
We tried to be good.
No, it's been here a long time.
Long time.
I want to get that out.
Many years.
So I, but really, I don't have an issue, Mr. Chair. I think, you know, we talked about it when there was problems, and maybe that three, three tenant model wasn't really working, and one guy not cooperating really made it look bad. So I think I'm pretty comfortable with Henry and Sophie and one other person.
Okay. Carrie?
I, I think as long as we stay with the amount of cars that were licensed for the year, for the, the business, and that the new tenant realizes that nothing goes on the street, so that way we don't have any problems, because I'm sure you don't want to be here every Monday.
No.
Well, every other Monday.
What do you mean not?
So I, I, I think as long as, like the old saying, tall fences make good neighbors, as long as the tenant understands there's ex mona cars, none to be on the road, follow the rules, I don't think there'd be a problem.
That truck too, that time. I know that wasn't your truck, that?
No, no.
Big flat, goes on the sidewalk and across the street.
Yeah, well, he did cause lots of trouble for us. We did have really, you know, rough time, but like I says, we did, went to the court and we broke the contract with him much before, you know, should be ending. We just, we just so happy he's out of that place.
Sure.
And starting looking normal and nice. We putting lots of work in, like I said, inside and outside, and looks very well, like we want to.
Yep, I live right near there. I go by it several times a day, and it looks very fantastic.
Everybody happy calling us. My sister, "Well, the nice job you did it."
Yes.
They see me working hard like men, moving the things and throwing at the dumpster.
Oh, yes, a lot of cars.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'll recommend that if, if the Board has no immediate objections, we'll move forward with the application for the next meeting.
Yep, I have no issues.
Run it by Nelson, I give you.
Yep.
Okay.
And the tenant will be here for that?
If you want me to, he will come.
I, I just think if we, we, we start off with a good understanding, hopefully you won't have any issues like?
Yeah, that's the reason I came to ask you to, I was, if it's possible. He seems to be like he's a very nice gentleman and local person, so.
I just think it would be, if he's applying for the license?
Agreed.
We might want to ask him some questions.
Yes. You can bring him with you next time.
Actually, she's, she's applying, you're applying for the license, correct?
Well, you already have the license for the rush. We do.
But she's kind of like subletting. It's, it's her license, but.
For the third.
I agree with Mr. Sigenovich. It would be good if the same information was.
He's like, you know, like sem, he was going to be taking the position, you know, as a renter, rented person, or sem, but he seems to be like he's a very neat person, so let's hope.
We'd like to meet him. Mr. Johnson?
So you'll be incurring the risk of the new business?
In what control?
That's, right, that's, that's, if it's your, if you're licensed, it's your risk.
Oh, yeah, I know that, but I don't think he, we will have to be worried too much about this person because he's already in the business. So he knows very well the, you know, rules and what to do and how to do. So let's hope that we'll stay like that. I don't want to go court again. It's not fun to go to court.
I gave up on hope a long time ago. I planned, I tried to plan on it.
Well, you know, you always.
Agreed.
You always have to have hope, doesn't matter what.
So we have.
You know, doesn't matter what you go through, you still have to have hope, for better future.
Present a strategy, but, you know, I get it.
It isn't. Hope means it's out of your control.
Yeah, but we have, we have, we need it, though. I agree with, I agree with Zosha. Well, we will see you guys soon and give our best to Henry.
Thank you. He did say hi to everybody. He's doing really better.
Yes, good. Glad.
So I'm very happy.
Fantastic.
Also, so thank you so much to all of you.
Welcome.
And happy New Year.
We'll see you soon.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. All right. We'll go back to item four A. We have a joint meeting of the FAA and the Board of Selectmen, and Dudley Child and Regional School System is here. Discussion about capital needs and planning and regional district budget topic. Mr. Ruda, you'd like to set the table, please?
We post this as a joint meeting so that we would have an opportunity to meet with the district representatives that are here tonight with the FAA here with us in the room, and I don't think they have a quorum, but they may after, so I don't think there's really much of a urgency to open their meeting, but that's why Mr. Bosh, Mr. Matthew have come tonight, and they presented you with a plan, and without further ado, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, guys, come on up. Mr. Mayor, anything, any comments to start, or?
No.
Chairman of the FAA?
Not yet. Give him time.
You always do, Mike. You always do.
I'll keep quiet. I'll hold my power.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Administrator and Select Board.
Mr. Bosh, good to see you.
Good to see you, too. Sorry if I'm too loud in here. I'm going to do a brief introduction, but I'm obviously here for questions as well. I want to start off by first acknowledging Jeff from DPW. He's been fantastic, right? That's Jeff, right?
Yes, it is.
Yeah. We haven't met face to face. We've done a lot of communicating, but we haven't met face to face. He's done a fantastic job with the roads and stuff and helping us out with the schools and communication. I think that Friday was probably the easiest snow day that I've ever called in, you know, 12 years of being a superintendent, and I only say that because of, after the accumulation, not because of the forecast.
Hey, you rolled the dice there, but it was a good call.
Happy New Year to all of you. Hopefully, you're going to hear me say the word "hope" and hopefully too sometimes, but I know where, I know where it lands, where it doesn't land. But I just want to thank you for your time this evening and to give us an opportunity to come in and present some information to you. So the main, the main presentation this evening is really around capital improvements for the, for the district. We have entered into, we started last year, working on a multi-year plan for capital improvements for the Dudley Child and Regional School District. We established a capital outlay and safety committee within our district with our school committee representatives, and we've, so we've been working for two years on what a capital improvement plan would look like, you know, what some of the items would look like as far as costs, what items that we should assume should be district responsibility, what items are at a costly factor that we would look for support from the communities for, and so that's why we're here this evening, because we've done quite a bit of legwork around all of that to this point. So, you know, with the multi-year plan, obviously, you know, you start with asking for everything and you, and you narrow it down and you try to prioritize what you really need right now, because there's no doubt that finances will always be a question, as they should. So, you know, this evening, we're presenting to you what we believe is, is a real priority for our district moving forward for capital improvements, given the number of years since there's been an extensive investment within the district capital to try to maintain the facilities that we have. There's no doubt that the community of Dudley, as well as Charlton, has done a lot to support the Dudley Child and Regional School District, especially around facilities and capital improvements, but also for operating budget purposes as well. You know, for the, for years, you've supported our district through, you know, through decades, 70s, 80s, 90s, building the new middle school that opened up in the year 2000, window project at Shepherd Hill Regional High School from there, and you've really supported the district and their facility needs for, for quite some time. But it has been some time since we've actually bounced into some extensive capital improvements for the actual building envelopes and buildings within that district, so that's why we're here this evening. To my right, you know, Mr. Matthew, who's the Director of Business Services in, in Operations for our district, and to my left is Mr. Dave Siniscachi, who is the Director of Facilities that we've taken onboard this, this year, which has really helped us out tremendously. We learned a lot through COVID about our facilities, especially around the ventilation portions of that, and we really do appreciate the town's support in making sure that our ventilation was improved and, and met a certain standard for, for all of our students. So Mr. Siniscachi will also support in, in the work that he's done as to why we're at the priority list that we've provided you this evening. But at this time, I'm going to turn it over to, to Mr. Matthew to speak more extensively about the, the capital improvement plan that you have in your hands.
Thank you very much. So, again, this has been many years in the making. When I first started in the district back in 2015, capital planning was identified as one of those key areas that the district needed to concentrate on, even though the schools were only 15 years old, even at that point in time, the roofs were coming off warranty and had presented ongoing issues really since installation. As we developed those capital plans and, and capital needs, you know, in 2018, the, it was proposed that we look at an operational override rather than a capital override, and that was a successful process for all, everybody involved here. So, you know, that, that certainly turned out well, but it did put capital to the back burner once again. So, again, we're here knowing that the district last embarked on a round of major capital investments over 20 years ago with the construction of the two middle schools and renovations at Mason Road and Dudley Elementary. Prior to that, Heritage School in Charlton was constructed, and Charlton Elementary was renovated approximately 30 years ago. The last bonded debt for these projects was paid in full in fiscal 2019. To ensure that the district remains current with infrastructure needs, a regular pattern of assessment and repairs should be implemented. We see the current round of projects as Phase One, and we've identified these specific projects as the highest priority for, for the district to protect its assets. Depending on timing, we will also need to address Shepherd Hill and other repairs at the six other schools as Phases Two and Three in the future. So the first area of major concern, as I indicated, is the roofs at both Dudley Middle School and Charlton Middle School. I gave Mr. Ruda a printout of the 146-page report that we had commissioned in the spring on the two roofs. The roofs at Dudley Middle School and Charlton Middle School are original to the construction of the building, again, you know, a little over 20 years ago. The mem, the membrane that was installed on the roofs has a history of poor performance due to poor manufacturing process. The maintenance staff has continued to target repairs by coating areas of the roof, but those coatings really are just a stopgap measure, and at this point in time, only can provide a temporary fix. The recent report shows that both roofs have had significant increase in the saturated insulation as compared, compared to the same testing performed six, seven years ago at this point. A new styrene butyl styrene, did I say that correctly? Sorry? All right. Modified system would come with a minimum of a 30-year warranty, again, unlike the 15-year warranty that was included with the current roofs. The second major area is kind of a finalization, if you will, of the field project that occurred in, in 2014, 2015. The main athletic field was replaced with a turf field, as you guys are all very well aware. As part of that project, bleachers were not installed at that time, and since then, the district has been renting the ones that are there. The bleachers themselves are only part of the financial equation involved in this, in the overall view here. Typically, bleachers have a press box at the top, which allows for a bird eye's view for announcing and filming of the action. The press box must be ADA compliant, adding an expense to, to this project. Additionally, based on the requirements of the building code, permanent restroom facilities must be constructed. The cost of this aspect of the project adds significantly to the expense of the, of that installation. And then the last pieces of what we're referring to as the Phase One project are dealing with some communications and cameras, as well as fire panel, the fire panel projects that the district has supported through its operating budget to a degree. The communications, we're looking to update and expand our communications and camera systems at each schools. The current communication system is an over-the-air analog setup that allows for some communication between schools in the same towns, but does not allow for communication across the district, nor does it allow for direct communication with 911 Emergency Services. An updated platform could allow for communication across the district as well as with public safety, pending, you know, future discussions, if that's an area that we want to pursue. When the platform is updated, it's important to, to ensure that the solution will last for a while. We don't want to invest in something that in five years will go away, so we would be looking to move to a digital platform rather than analog platform. And the same kind of situation with the cameras. Each school is, has kind of its own system. The systems don't talk to each other, and not all of the systems at the schools can be viewed by outside agencies such as public safety. So we would be looking to go to a common digital system that would allow for remote viewing by authorized personnel. And then, again, the fire panels and some of the architectural review and professional fees, the professional fees in the capital planning and for architectural services, we budgeted 8% for the roofs as required when doing a large capital project like this. And we're proposing to do a thorough review of all of the schools, excluding Shepherd Hill at this time, so that develop, can develop its, the district can develop its next phase of capital planning. Some items, such as roofs and boilers, are, are clear based on the expected useful life and level of issues any specific component is experiencing. The district will engage with an architectural firm to ensure it has a complete list of areas of concerns and can include all of those in its capital planning. The district continues to explore MSBA funding to address the needs at Shepherd Hill, a 50-year-old facility at this point in time, with, again, the windows and door project done approximately 2010 timeframe there. On the back of this handout, you'll see a estimated budgetary numbers for this, this phase of the capital projects. Unfortunately, timing is never perfect to ask for large sums of money, and right now, timing is particularly bad with inflation and supply, supply chain issues. So what we're proposing to do is, you know, put this out, this is just our initial draft of the plan. We have our financial advisor coming to the school committee meeting, the second one in January, so January 26th. I encourage you guys to, to watch that if you're at all interested. And as we finalize this and put it out and get it in front of the voters, we want to have a good, at least 12-month lead time for, before next summer to secure the roofs. Again, from everything that we've heard in the industry, there are significant delays. To secure the roofs, again, from everything that we've heard in the industry, there are significant delays. Even if we had had this money back in October timeframe, it would have been unlikely that we would have gotten into the queue for this summer in terms of roofing projects. So that's the the long and short of phase one of the capital plan. Again, we did, we're not looking to address every issue, we're looking to address the main priority ones right now. And, you know, work with an architectural firm to identify that phase two. And again, start to revisit this every ten to fifteen years so that there isn't a backlog of issues going forward. I am sure that there are some questions or comments that will be forthcoming.
Thank you, Mr. Matthew. Steven?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, gentlemen, for the presentation. Nice to meet the new facilities manager. What are we paying currently for rent on the bleachers per year?
In in the initial year of the contract where the price usually goes up to, I think this last round was around sixty thousand dollars. And then subsequent years inside of that bid have come in around the thirty thousand dollar time, price range.
Were bleachers included in the cost when they first put the field in there? Was it always intention? I know I know way back, they thought they could reuse the metal existing, right? You were going to try to repair, reuse?
I wasn't there at the time. I came in just as the field was completed. So I'm I'm not privy to the planning that occurred at that point in time. That does sound familiar, that the plan was to reuse the bleachers, but unfortunately, they were not able to be reused. So, you know, we we scrambled at the last minute to ensure that they were seating for the initial game. And the thought was, again, that we would do that for a couple of years and, you know, have that first round of capital going up to include the bleachers. And then that got extended out even further.
So in that two-point-four million, that that also includes the bathroom cost, you built that into that? So someone saw this and they saw two-point-four for bleachers, maybe?
Yeah, exactly. The 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 bleachers themselves, the sitting area is not the two-point-four million. It's the restroom facilities, it's the trenching, it's the piping, it's the press box with ADA compliance.
All right, and then big elephant in the room, to me anyway, because people ask. Clearly, you stated and you read it excluding Shepherd Hill, is that because we're looking at a complete replacement at Shepherd Hill sometime in the future?
No, we did receive communication from MSBA, as you know, we've been filing for a eligibility for Mass School Building Authority to pick up Shepherd Hill for a project. Even though when you were invited into the eligibility process, they want you to come up with several designs for the feasibility study. And one of those designs has to be a raise and new, but another one has to be renovate. And I from my perspective and from my experience, renovate is still going, to me, is the way to go. That building has good bones, good facilities, we've walked around with MSBA, Dave could probably reinforce this as well. You know, we're looking at a renovation to that building, not a not a raise and brand-new facility in any way. Even though, again, MSBA, because they they give you so much money, they want you to go through every single step. But I think from my my experience, it's going to tease out that the renovation is going to be the best way for our community and for our school to to go. So I I I really can't support a raise in in brand-new building. Not only for the cost of what that would be, but also because you have a great facility there, it needs an upgrade. You're you're dealing with, you know, HVAC systems that have been there since the the building was built. You know, the the high school principal will often talk about, you know, it's like a voodoo experiment when you go down there, you know, you got to twist the pipes and turn the knobs and, you know, it's it's all it's it's all a system that somebody has to gain skills in. It's still working, knock on wood, but it's, you know, it's it's aged, it's aged quite a bit. So MSBA, they've been delayed because of everything going on with COVID. They said that they have a board meeting on March second for their their authority to invite projects into for eligibility, we could be one of those. And then we would, they would either tell us we have to resubmit our S O, our statement of interest that we submitted last year, or a new one. But again, we're we're, I'm, I'll say it, I'm headstrong and it's a renovation project, it's not a raise and rebuilt.
I appreciate the answer because that seems to be the two-hundred-pound gorilla in a lot of rooms, you know what I mean? People hearing and thinking and looking at other municipalities' projects, I mean, there's big numbers out there. I know they pick up, what, sixty percent now or something?
No, I think, yeah, I think we're closer to seventy percent. I think we're, I think we're close to seventy seventy percent on the dollar for, but that that's seventy percent on the dollar for certain parts of the project.
Right.
It's not a hundred percent of the entire project.
That's qualified.
It's, say it again?
That's qualified.
That's whatever qualifies within that particular. But if if you look at, again, I've been through a building project, if you look at what they're they're looking for, education obviously is their biggest component. We have the facility for education. It's, you know, some science rooms or science labs need to be expanded to incorporate more, stem more science education. So that's really, to me, and this is so preliminary, but that's really where a lot of the renovation would be for us, because the other rooms would have still standard size that MSBA MSBA would require. To give you heads up, some of the projects that they wouldn't support financially is like if we expanded the auditorium, built a new superintendent's office, which I'm not advocating for, they don't they don't pay for that, that's a hundred percent yours.
Listen, we went down the road with that, there were some problems and that was, I know you guys weren't there.
I love I love my space.
External forces on that, believe me.
I love my space.
Thank you.
I'm just giving you a couple of examples.
No, I know, thank you.
Anything else?
No, I'm good.
Thank you for coming, Joan, to the chair. You know, obviously, if you have a building, you have to maintain it. If the roof goes, you need to fix it, otherwise the rest of the world is going to go down. That being said, I I always want to know, when we get into the details, I know this is like a hundred-thousand-foot level, it's probably not even thirty-thousand-foot level, right? So at the at the thirty-thousand and twenty-thousand, ten-thousand-foot level, probably want to be looking at, you know, what's the general maintenance plans? How much of maintenance is built into your budget to avoid some issues? You know, obviously, special cars like bad materials is not something you budget for. But you can put money away for big-ticket items. So it'd be interesting to see, you know, through the budgeting process, how much money you're putting away. And then compare that against the the big-ticket items. And then also probably want to look at a comparison of this buy-build of the bleachers versus rent. You know, just look at the, you know, how long is it going to take to to pay it off versus, you know, if you rent it for forever, what's and what's that look like? Assuming some like three percent cost increase right here or something for.
Anything else? Carrie?
Thank you for coming here so early in the process. I heard you say, bring it to the voters, so I assume there's going to be some sort of two-and-a-half debt exclusion sort of thing. And I know we're early, we're early on. That's so we don't have to make any plans for anything on our end? I'm sorry?
There's a few operational things that we'll need to do on our end for capital improvement requests, but we can go over that after.
This is all preliminary, but thank you for coming early as opposed to late, appreciate it.
Mike?
I guess the only the only question I have, you said, you said you're looking at this in next year is what you're looking at? To start phase one?
Ideally, we'd get this in front of the voters sometime in the late spring this year.
This year?
Okay, but the roofs would not be something that we're able to do until the following summer.
But you'd be looking to secure funding this summer?
Yes, yeah, that that way we can go out.
The bleach, just on the bleach, you said thirty thousand is your is now your new payment? Is that something, is that something that's going to affect your budget? I mean, is that going to be reduced in your budget?
Well, if we weren't paying for it, yes.
Right, so that would that would come back as savings, I'm assuming, right? Okay, it's not going to go to some other line item? Okay, all right. That's the only question I got.
Joan, anything from you?
Me, like, I appreciate the thought and detail that went into this, guys, this is great. I for one was happy to hear the renovate versus the raise and build. I know I I went through that back in Wilmington when I was going through the school and having the dust and everything. But that was far more palatable to people back then, I can remember. I still remember the slogan, renovate to educate, so you can you can use that. Yeah.
Just thought of that now.
Yeah, that was nineteen eighty-something. I don't want to age myself too much. Another question on the on the field, how's the field holding up? You know, usually, is there any like maintenance-type things baked into that number as well?
Well, we're at five years right now on the field. Typically, those turf fields need to be addressed in some form or fashion after ten years. But it's not the major expense of doing it from the get-go. So just, you know, I'd say maybe it's twenty percent, fifteen percent of that overall cost.
Okay, so that that's that's involved, that's part of this number then?
It's not in here.
No.
It's not?
No, no, no.
Okay.
No, again, this would be, the bleachers would be something that we're looking at doing sooner rather than later. But it would be, it would be great to be able to take that expense from the bleacher rental and start putting it into some sort of stabilization fund to to help fund the replacement of the turf.
Makes sense. The other thing I like about this is the, you know, it addresses public safety, you know, that's one of the things we always like, look to see the cameras. Mr. Ruder's done a lot with the the town on the town side to do something like that, so I think the school would have that, you know, all the fire panels, I'm sure. Dean would love to hear that. Yeah, I again, very early on, but I think it's always good to get people a sense of what's coming. Right, and how, we we know, we don't need to talk about how it's going to get paid for yet, because that's, because they want, people want to cut to the chase pretty quickly on that, but.
These gentlemen weren't there, do you remember what the cost of that football field was?
I was trying to think of that.
Two-point-one.
Two-point-two?
Two-point-one.
Yeah, it was about two, a two-million-dollar borrowing or so, I believe.
I know.
Two million dollars for the field, and five years later, it's two-point-something for the.
The rest, the rest of it, yeah.
The stuff too, but yeah, I agree.
The first time there were people who donated, I believe.
Some money, yeah.
Some.
Some.
The USAF, USAF family?
Yes.
Yep.
Can any of this stuff be grant, grant-funded, like, we got grants to help us with our technology, right? Is there anything on the school side for that, like, through the state?
Generally not for roofs or bleachers.
Those cameras.
Oh, the camera, yeah, the first round of cameras with the new system actually was a fifty-thousand-dollar public safety grant that we received right at the start of COVID.
I remember that, I do remember that, that's a good, good call there. Okay.
Through the chair?
Mr. Ruder?
Is this, Rich, is this in order of priority or?
Yeah, I I I think the dollar listing absolutely is in a priority order.
So for example, Mr. Chairman, if we get the ball rolling with a project, you know, maybe scheduled FY twenty-four, for example, for the roofs. We wouldn't, we could at least get it into the capital improvement planning process and come up with what we think might be a five-year plan. It doesn't necessarily mean it's going to be locked in at five years, but we know that this won't likely happen in FY twenty-three for the roof, correct?
Right, and depending on timing and all of those things, you know, I would imagine that we would have a few rounds of bands to finance the projects until, you know, we've got final bills and then do a final bonding.
Would you consider, through the chair, would you consider coming back in for our capital improvement meetings in a few weeks when that begins and speak more to capital improvement? We can talk about, you know, so other sources of funding that might be available and so forth.
Yeah, because there's some of these things, like the fire alarm, maybe it would be good for that, what you're thinking.
Yeah.
Just looking at their line item costs.
Yeah, some some of these items do fit into that shared town concept that we had talked about. With the town administrators, it's just with the fire panels, we had made an agreement with both chief, both chiefs in both towns to ensure that we got those done as quickly as possible. So we want to just address those if we can inside of this project.
Inside of the FY twenty-three, Mr. Chairman, project, inside of FY twenty-three?
Well, again, through through this phase one of our our projects, if if some of these things can be picked up separately or or uniquely, then, you know, the sooner, the sooner the better.
So, Mr. Chair?
Mr. Sullivan?
Dudley-Cheltenham, so the the bottom-line estimated figure, that's a shared cost between the two towns, right? Is that a fifty-fifty split, or does it go on the ratio of if there's more Charlton schools, you know what I mean?
The the way the regional agreement reads and is currently stated, the capital expenses for each town are their own. So anything that is related to a Dudley school would be a Dudley expense, anything related to a Charlton school would be a Charlton expense. When you get to Shepherd Hill, it's split on the percentage of students in the year that the vote happens, I guess.
Right, so if it's, Charlton's still a little bit bigger than Dudley, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I think.
Like fifty-five?
I want to say it was like fifty-two, forty-eight, maybe?
Yeah, I know, it's gotten closer to the.
It has, yeah.
It's just been really tilted.
Yeah. That's a great question, because that that's what will come up, right? New people anticipate what people are going to think as we go through this.
Please accept my apology, DMS, if this is a priority, DMS should have been the first one listed this evening, just, just so you know.
Now, we get, this is the comprehensive list, Mr. Lomar, I got that, I got that. Anybody have any other questions for these, these fine gentlemen? Guys, this was, this was very informative, thank you, appreciate it. Anything else, next steps, Mr. Ruder?
Mr. Chairman, I think we'll, we'll, I know Rich will be happy to hear this, we'll make sure that we involve the district in the capital improvement planning process. And go through that, come up with a five-year plan for the Dudley schools and and take it from there. And that gives us the opportunity to have in a smaller setting, meet up some of the funding issues. And prioritize. But I'm sure that the fire panel is more important than the bleachers at this point. Or easier to sell one or the other.
Great, thank you.
More palatable number.
End that.
Yes.
All right, thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming, nice to meet, nice to meet you.
Could we, could we have a moment to talk about FY twenty-three budget as well? Just, again, big, big broad topics?
Yeah, kickoff, we got the chairman of FIA here too, take it away.
I just have a quick introduction and then I'll turn it over to Rich again. We're, similar to last year, we're doing everything we can to understand all of the the funding that we're receiving through ESR, through grants and all that, how it all fits. It is, it, as you know, as a town, it doesn't always fit to pay for something or or pay for something that's pre-existing. You know, one of the things that we've noticed and identified is, it was probably, I'll stop short of saying tragic, but probably one of the most difficult things we did was have students learn from home for a very long period of time. I don't know how else to say that, I can't color coat, I can't, you know, put a nice little bow on top of that. So our our student needs are through the roof. You know, whether it's academics, whether it's, you know, accelerating students, trying to get everyone to the same page. Because in in essence, they were, even though they were being facilitated by staff members last year. You know, they, it was, it was very difficult to monitor that like we do this year in a classroom setting. Student needs, you know, we use the term dysregulation, meaning students that have come back to a structured environment, to a school environment, are a little bit more dysregulated, which means they need more supports. We've utilized a lot of ESR funds this year to add school adjustment councils to our district. You know, another entity that's really been crushed is, and I know that some of you are aware of this, is our school nurses have been crushed. We've added, we've tried to add more nurses to our district because of all the myriad of responsibilities involved with COVID, never mind day-to-day schooling. But, you know, student needs really seems to just keep pushing our our envelope and our and our ability to to meet those needs. I know we've talked in the past, and I know this year coming in, Mr. Marcy, I know you specifically asked for this last year, was what is our enrollment and all that kind of stuff? That will come in with our report this year, and, you know, and I've mentioned it, as you saw at the special town meeting, I mentioned enrollment is down. You know, it's it's easy to say that with enrollment down, we should be reducing staff. It's easy to say, it's hard to do. So we can reduce staff in one department, but we may need staff in another department. And and the reason why I'm saying that is because student needs are are exponential at this point in time. And and when I say student needs, I I really mean family, family needs, and you know that as a community as well. That, you know, a lot of people are still struggling through, you know, what we've been through and what we're still going through. So we're going to maximize every grant, every funding we possibly have. As we talked about last year, we don't want to set up a funding cliff, though, we don't want to, you know, invest a hundred percent of what we got. So that next year, we come back to you and say, okay, you know, we did a good job, we invested a hundred percent of what we received through ESR. Now, we're going to be at a significant deficit, or you're going to have to help us. We don't want to put you in that position, we don't want to put ourselves in that position. So we still have a lot of moving parts going on with our FY twenty-three. We've gone through the process with our principals to ask what their needs are. We continue to evaluate the programs that we have in place to see if we're meeting the needs of our students. We continue to evaluate the student needs that are going on within our district and the cost centers and cost factors with that. But there's a lot of moving parts, but we are working very hard to try to come in with an FY twenty-three budget, which, you know, to this point, we still understand your position. You know, Dudley doesn't have, you know, flush with money to just give us, throw us a million dollars, we know that. You know, but we're going to come in with recommendations and we're going to try to work with you to see what that looks like. I I know Rich wants to to say a few words specifically around like E and D and school choice and all that kind of stuff. But again, I want to, I want to promise you that we're going to work hard to sharpen our pencils and, yes, student enrollment going down does mean maybe we don't have a classroom teacher in a certain grade. Um, but again, I want to, I want to promise you that we're gonna work hard to sharpen our pencils and, yes, uh, student enrollment going down does mean maybe we don't have a, a classroom teacher in a certain grade. Um, but we may have a need for a, a professional in another area within our school. Um, and so we'll come in with that type of uh communication around that. It's not as simple. You know, when we go through the budget process, I, I've always worked with the principals, it's not as simple as just saying what I want. It's also, what are you gonna give up? Because we don't have the, the funds to pay for. Um, and that's, that's not, never an easy conversation, but it's something we have to go through. The struggle has to be real. Uh, so we're gonna, we're gonna really work through that uh this year as well, as we have the past couple of years. Uh, but I know Rich has a couple of, uh, from being the finance person for the district.
Yeah, so, you know, uh, as we go forward, you know, whether it's fiscal twenty-three or discussions leading into fiscal twenty-four, I, I think one of the things that would definitely help the district and, and definitely help with capital planning um in the future i- is to look at some mechanism to try and reduce the district's use of E and D slash school choice, you know? Um, if we could eliminate one, one source or the other, or cut both in half, that would provide a level of cushion um going forward for those unexpected things that come up for those, you know, eighty thousand dollar water coolers that if you don't have, Dudley Middle School isn't gonna have air conditioning, and the whole concept of the school was built, built on air conditioning. Dealing with those one-time um larger-than-normal-budget expenses uh that come up in, in a district with seven schools and, you know, close to uh five hundred employees, um additionally, uh, for, specifically for FY twenty-three, we do have open union contracts that, um, you know, will have, obviously have uh some level of impact on the budget, you know, as we go forward. We haven't really started the formal negotiations yet, but um, you know, that's gonna be a key factor in where the FY twenty-three budget goes.
To be clear, that would, would, one of the, one of them is the teachers' contract is, is, is negotiating up this year.
What are you here for that, huh?
Mm-hmm.
Holy cow.
They know the concept of shared sacrifice now, right?
Do they? Yeah. More than ever now that they've gone through remote learning and.
I was in the union thirty-four years, so.
Anybody have any questions on the, on budget? Twenty twenty-three budget? Mike? Yeah, we're good. I'll just say that, you know, last year we went through this and uh FAA and the board, you know, actually went above our guidelines for the school at what, four point eight percent, so. Can't always promise that stuff every year. We knew that it was a transition year coming out of, coming out of COVID, right, so.
Is that hope word again?
It is, hey, we need it. Like I said, hope isn't a strategy, but we still need it, right? But we, uh, again, we like to be eyes wide open and very clear on what we all face, and I appreciate the candid comments and uh about, uh, about how it will work, so I appreciate that. You know, I know these guys do too. Um, so yeah, we will, we will always work together on that.
Great.
What else? Mike? Awesome. Well, thank you guys, really appreciate it.
Thank you so much for having us.
Thank you for your time, thank you.
Yep, see you soon. Thanks so much. Okay. Uh, item five, we have some old business. Uh, reschedule board selectmen meeting from January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two to January thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Mr. Root?
Mr. Chairman, I'll uh, I'm gonna ask you to just pass that over. I don't think that's gonna be necessary at this point.
Okay. No objection, we'll pass that over. Alright, we'll go to item six, departments. Uh, Police Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Not, not a lot to report. We did have a uh situation where we arrested a gentleman that had a stolen vehicle and was breaking into some vehicles up in the, uh, on a Boilwood Charlton. So uh, we would ask residents if they, anybody had any uh issues, if their vehicles might have been broken into or anything at that point, to let us know. Uh, because we discovered the vehicle off a backup on-road in our area, but it was probably spread out through some of those, those areas around the Charlton, uh, Charlton line, so if anybody had any issues over there, uh, that'd be the big thing to check on. Otherwise, we're just uh planning on getting the budget submitted and everything and going through all that stuff, so unless there's any questions or anything. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Chief, Chief Fire, Fire Chief, Dean?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Um, we conducted um interviews last week to fill a vacant full-time slot vacated by um John Bain, who left in November for, actually October, for North Pro. Wish him the best of luck. Uh, we interviewed several candidates. Uh, we did come to a finalist, uh, Tim Dunnehue. Um, and he did accept the job, and he'll be starting February seventh. Um, I spoke to, well, I texted the administrator earlier today, and we might have the potential to open a warming center tomorrow if needed. Um, either at the senior center or we, I can do it at the fire department too, but um it's not, as of right now, we're not doing it, but where it's gonna be bitterly cold tomorrow, we might look into doing that during some of the daytime hours.
Will we utilize Rave if you are gonna do that? I need it.
Yes. Okay, I'll send out the Rave.
Um, will you bring, bring our new firefighter in to in a meeting? We can introduce him to everybody.
Sure. I'll, I'll give it, give the information to Michelle or, or the TA, so we can um get that on the agenda for the next meeting, or maybe the meeting after that.
Yeah, yeah, when he gets settled, yeah. Any questions for Dean?
Nope.
Alright, thanks, sir. Jeff, Highway Superintendent?
Um, so I just wanted to expand a little on the town administrator mentioned before, that we were successful with uh jointly with the planning board and um the highway department and town administrator with, uh, receiving a grant uh for uh four hundred thousand dollars for the sidewalk project on Mason Road. Um, the engineer's underway with the design work for that. At some point in the future, um, we'll be uh having an informational meeting on that for residents of the area. And uh, the uh projected uh schedule for that would be um sometime in May to uh award a contract after it's, after it's posted. Um, one of the other things too, um, there's been some grumblings around town. People are calling about uh sand or sand-salt mix at the highway department. I mentioned at the last meeting, we're no longer providing that. That's uh as a result of staying in step with the MS four, Stormwater Management Program that we follow. Um, we report to the state and the federal government, and uh we're currently, we've pretty much phased out sand-salt mix. We're using salt-only. Um, sand-salt on a very, very limited basis, but uh the town's no longer providing that for residents at the highway, highway department, and um uh, it's a regulatory issue, so it's uh, and if, and all, all people need to do is check around in area towns, and uh they'll, they'll recognize the fact that they're, they're following the same model. But not, not too many towns that actually provide that anymore, so. Uh, and I guess that's uh pretty much it, other than, uh, you know, we're in force with uh keeping up with the storm, uh, storms that are coming at us. Fortunately, so far, knock on wood, we've uh, we've been lucky, had a relatively mild, mild winter, uh, other than uh some ice events. Last Friday's storm, uh, you know, a significant amount, but uh we'll uh continue to manage things as it comes.
Yeah, Jeff, um, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Sullivan.
I did reach out to Jeff after the storm. Two to four, three to six became ten to twelve pretty quick, and I, I get, the staff did a great job. I know you're a little shorthanded and contract plows and everything else, but you did a great job, I think. A lot of compliments. I think I heard the truck go by in the middle of the night doing some pre-treating, and when it came, it came.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I know. Nice job, Jeff, you and your team.
Thanks.
Uh, Richard, Treasury Collector?
Good evening. Need to thank the board again and the town clerk. We've borrowed some more money, more money. We're authorized a million seven ninety. Cutthroat rate, less than point six percent. Um, so really, at the end of the day, um, it's good, we should be borrowing the money within our means, but it's an opportune time to do projects. Um, so thank you for everybody who did the signing for the town clerk, who made sure that she was here to witness. Um, which leads me into compliance. Um, annual, um, it's the time of year where we have continuing disclosure. Everybody talks about bond rating. Will the treasurer, collectors, annual report, the continuing disclosure, all of those things tie in, so when we're borrowing money, they sent out the continuing disclosure from the previous year, they sent out the audit. So all of these things tie into the daily, what goes on. Uh, I'd expect the audit to be coming back, and again, um, they'd be tying those documents back in. As far as borrowing money, the water sewer is having a rate study. Um, the infrastructure committee, uh, as part of that, they had reached out. All of the debt is with the people from tie-in bonds, so that on February second, I know the board's gonna have a meeting on uh January thirty-first. But they have, uh, they have everything they need, and there's a pretty open line of communication, so best foot forward, best information should give us the best uh output. Budget-wise, Worcester Regional next week is going to have their meeting. They give us an assessment. Put your seatbelt on, because you know it's going to be at least ten point nine, five percent increase. That's just the model that the board had voted. Worcester Regional Retirement Board, the funding schedule uh out to twenty thirty-six, and they've reduced it, seven point five is the funding amount. Again, if you look, not to put everybody to sleep, but rates just keep shrinking. Um, as far as some of the insurance renewals, uh, Medicare was a month or two ago. Hampshire Council of Governments Insurance Trust really isn't gonna have pen to paper until the March meeting. The mice tell me it's gonna be modest, but then again, in the area where Fallon no longer has a presence, you would probably expect at least one or two employees whose spouses are on Fallon outside of here to migrate in, or Blue Cross being opportunistic, saying fewer competitors, we can raise the price. Discussion to be had once the numbers show up, and we always end with a big smile. So December twenty-ninth, all those bills went into the mail. Everybody should have two tax bills. Uh, third and the fourth quarter, these are the actuals. If the address is incorrect, you want to talk to your assessor. Um, make sure that we have accurate bills going out there. If you haven't received a bill, more than happy, my office will make sure that you have one. Uh, along those lines, end of January, beginning of February, you're gonna have your excise bill. Water sewer bills, real estate bills are sort of on a cycle. Your excise bills are going to come out. This is the, the mnemonic I use. If I'm buying a Valentine's card for my wife, if I'm watching the Daytona five hundred, the third thing on that list is, make sure that you have your excise. Um, ha- again, happy to make sure that everybody has all of their bills. None of the bills are generated in-house. It's a file that comes from the Registry of Motor Vehicles. So if it says that John Marcy lives at Marcy Lane, hey, wait a second, obviously it's a mistake. It's nothing internal. Again, happy to go through and make sure that everybody gets what they need. Alright.
Excise tax, that's gotta be my least favorite bill to pay, but, but you're right about.
It, it hurts me when you say that.
Stop buying stuff.
Huh?
Stop buying stuff.
You know, really, you know, I, I still pay a five-dollar excise, you know, the, the hamster's still warming up outside. Push it along. Um, much appreciated.
Any questions, Steven?
Of course.
Yeah, I, I'd spoken to Michelle, Rich. Remember Michelle, like a month ago? The bills that went out, they went out bulk rate in our first class for some reason. So they weren't getting, remember I talked, I called the office?
I think we rectified that.
Yeah, but then, so, so for people that moved, those bills weren't forwarded. They were treated as what we used to call undeliverable bulk business rate mail. So, so whether, whether, whether a third party filled those envelopes, they took the twelve cent rate on the bulk or whatever the rate is now, and so they didn't get forwarded. So people that may have moved, you know, if they moved in town.
Then it would have been returned to the town hall.
Wouldn't come back to the, the bulk, bulk rate, they just get disposed. They don't get, they don't get forwarded, they don't get returned to sender, unless it was endorsed, then you pay a fee for that.
Right, and that's an additional cost.
If the first class goes for free, if it's bulk rate and they ask for it, you pay a fee. I forget what the form is, I, I've been retired a long time, I don't remember.
Wow, wow, yeah.
It's a court job anyway, I would.
That, that, that's something I'll definitely follow up on.
Yeah, so whether stuffed the envelopes, make, make sure they didn't bill you for first class, because they certainly didn't go out first class.
Okay.
And you're right, too, some of those, Mr. Chair, um, like people had, like had remodeled houses, sort of tax bill was in their name. I talked to a couple of guys that work still, and they were going to the address with the builder's name on it. So I'm sure some of those didn't get, or the remodel, some of those didn't get delivered either, so. If you're running at a, a deficit of knowledge, people either didn't get something or they're not coming in because they didn't get it.
Right.
Whether stuffed the envelopes, you gotta double-check with them.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else for it? Thank you, Rich. Alright, item seven, student representative isn't here tonight. Um, I don't see board member comments, but we will uh do board member comments. Can we do that? Carrie?
On the agenda. You're fine.
Alright, Carrie.
I've got nothing this week.
Nothing? Steven?
Mr. Chair, I just wanted, they're gone, but reiterate, thank Dudley Charlton for coming in. Uh, very, very heartening to hear that it's not a raisin rebuild, because I think that was on the tip of people's tongues. Hope everybody had a safe and healthy holiday season. Uh, the COVID surge, Carrie talks about it all the time. Get the clinic coming up. People that choose to, please take advantage of it. Um, getting tired of the phrase, everybody's got it. There's ways you can help mitigate it, so. Personal, personal choice, I understand that, but, but stay safe out there. We always say, check on your neighbor. If you're gonna know, you gotta shut in. Fire Chief EMS Director, you know, have a warming station tomorrow. If you know someone's in dire straits, there was a bad fire in, was that the Bronx, I think?
Oh.
Space heater. And I'm not speaking for anybody, but I am, and I don't think anybody wants to have to go on, on a scene like that, so. Just be safe, folks. Thank you.
Jay?
Uh, just to reiterate, uh, Mr. Sullivan said, there's a vaccination clinic Saturday. I believe there's still openings. Uh, so if you want a shot, there's an opportunity for Dudley residents to get a shot. Contact the Board of Health for any questions. Uh, as you can tell, we're uh trying to spread out a little bit more. Due diligence is uh the key if you want to prevent something from happening, so let's be safe.
Thank you, Jay.
Hope is not a strategy.
Wow, that's a, oh, that's the phrase of the day, isn't it? Um, yeah, I'd also like to thank uh the, the schools for coming in to uh pitch that. I really appreciated the you know, the candor which they, which they spoke on things this time. Uh, no, they usually do, but we all work together and we will come to a good uh outcome there. And also, I wanted to publicly thank the, the highway department team uh for clearing the roads, um, for the amount of snow that we got. Again, it was a little, oh, a little bit more than I expected to wake up to, so um, we were on track there, so. And um, I think that is it for tonight. And tonight, we actually have an executive session, which we'll go into, and maybe Mr. Siggenarich can lead us there. Return it.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we convene into executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, A two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Fire Chief slash Assistant Fire Chief.
Motion by Mr. Siggenarich?
Second.
Taken by Mr. Johnson. Roll call move, please.
Carrie Siggenarich.
Mr. Johnson.
Steven Sullivan.
John Marcy, I. Unanimous. Thank you, everybody. Good night.